At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. This time, I'll ask Ms. Wendy Flynn to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Goshen Local School District Board of Education, this is a resolution authorizing Mrs. Melissa Pavrocki to fill the unexpired term of the office of Mr. John Gray, whereas the Board of Education of Goshen Local School District received notice of the resignation of Mr. John Gray, board member, effective April 24, 2022. And whereas the Board, per the statute, waited the required 10 days to fill the vacancy and prior to the required 30 days to fill the vacancy pursuant to Ohio law. And whereas pursuant to the revised Code 3313.11, the Board is now permitted to appoint a member to fill the unexpired term of office of Mr. John Gray. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Goshen Local School District that it is found and determined that the Board appointed Mrs. Melissa Pavrocki to fill the unexpired term of office of the Board of Education for the remainder of 2022 and 2023 calendar years provided by the revised Code 3313.11. Do I have a motion to appoint Mrs. Pavrocki?
I move to make a motion to appoint Melissa Pavrocki as our new school board member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Schinkel, you will call the roll.
Mr. Arera? Yes, this is Gray.
Yes.
This is Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Bente.
Yes. At this time, Mrs. Pavrocki, if you will come forward, Mr. Schinkel will read the honors.
We'll just go right here. If you hold the right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and partially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Goshen Local School District, Claremont County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and set office until your successor is elected and qualified.
I do.
Congratulations.
So welcome, this is Pavrocki. We're glad to have you.
At this time, we're going to nominate a person for the office of Vice President.
I would like to nominate Deborah Gray for the office of Vice President.
Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Schinkel, you will call the roll.
Mr. Arera? Yes. This is Gray.
Yes.
This is Casey.
Yes.
This is Pavrocki.
Yes.
Mr. Bente.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Arera.
Hey, so we have Goshen Middle School with us today. And Goshen Middle School is doing an achievement report, so I'll go forward.
All right. All right, well, thank you so much for having us. Congratulations, this is Pavrocki, this is Gray. I have two groups here from the middle school. We're addressing two of our characteristics of our portrait of a graduate. First up, Fearless Learners, and their advisor is Mrs. Emily Slegel. So I'm going to turn things over to her to introduce her group.
So this is my Slegel squad. I have got to have them this year. Their main objective is to work with our one-to-one technology. And they have really stepped up to the agenda, to the objective. And they're going to tell us a little bit about what they've done this year.
Hi, I'm Melissa Ayler.
Hi, I'm Barbara Lio.
I'm Kateen Sautner.
I'm Lawrence Rorke-Per.
I'm Kim Foster. And part of what we do here at Slegel Squad is check computers to make sure they're tip-top shape and make sure they're clean.
We also help to keep the library organized. This week, we've actually been spending time in there, re-categorizing all the books to make it easier when we put them back on the shelves for next year. We also help classes that come in, like Ms. Anderson's classroom. They come in and we help them find books and we help them check out.
Slegel Squad gives students opportunity to make new friends and bonds. And you meet new people that you wouldn't normally meet.
So again, been very lucky to have these guys. They've been specifically chosen for this because they do really categorize, they encompass all five of the Portraits of the Graduate characteristics. So really proud of these guys. Thanks.
All right, so in this transition, we have a group that Mrs. Petty has recruited to come and share some of the music talent and courses that we have begun to offer at the middle school. And Mrs. Petty has done a phenomenal job of offering as many musical opportunities as possible. And so this is the area of academically prepared in the area of fine arts. Yep, so as Ms. Flynn said, this year we have redone the middle school schedule to allow students some more choice and to allow students to have a variety of options instead of just general music. So this year, we have offered a music technology class, a piano class, a guitar class, a bucket drumming class, and an acting class from our music department. So I have three students here who are going to talk a little bit about things that they learn in our classes and do a little presentation for you.
Oh, sorry, I'm like really nervous. We learned how to create music, stories, and remixes on BandLab this year. And Ms. Petty taught us how to use DALL, which is Digital Audio Workstation, on the BandLab website. We also learned how loops can be used to create new music by giving a start for more ideas. We also were able to sequence and layer tracks to balance them. Creating form in music was also something we learned by creating different and, sorry, contrasting sections. This is a step-up from just teaching music history by giving us students a chance to explore other possible hobbies or interests.
And this is Grace's project, one of her projects.
The second class that I was able to offer this year was piano. And we have Kalen Wolfram here and share.
So a music A, B, C, D, E, F, G, then it repeats all throughout the keyboard. It starts with C and ends with C. A basic chord structure would be a C chord, which is thumb, middle, and pinky. To use a YouTube piano, you can search up piano tips or piano learning. And you can learn how to play chords. And to look up chords from a certain song could be on ecords.com. And it will give you the chords. And it will give you a YouTube clip so you can play along.
In the last two quarters, we've had a guitar class that I've been able to teach. And this is Millie Lenhart.
Lenhart.
Lenhart. She's done in guitar.
That's okay. A lot of people say it differently. It's whatever. Yeah, like Gracie, I'm really nervous if I mess up. So at the beginning of the year, we learned the parts, like the neck, the body, and how to tune it and stuff. So we use this app called Guitar Tuna. And it just tells you to tune up or down and you strum a certain chord. And we learned how to read tabs, so like which fret and which string and how to hold your fingers. And that was really helpful. Just like the piano, we also use E chords. And we looked up songs on there. So, yeah. So like, I learned the first four chords of this one song. So I'm just going to play them really quick. Again, don't be surprised because I'm really nervous. So it's like the first four chords. Not the best, but for like only one month of guitar and I've never played before, it was pretty decent. And Mrs. Petty did a good job of helping us through it. So, yeah.
All right.
Well, I've got some certificates to give you. And to the audience, they say a lot of times all we do is teach to a test, right? You guys do a ton. We've got some incredible teachers here that do so many different things for our kids. And you guys are examples, all of you, come on up, of Goshen Middle School at its finest. So we've got a certificate from the board for you for coming up and showing up tonight and telling us a little bit about the middle school. That was awesome. So we've got First Cadence Avner. Kevin Foster. Eliza Euler. Right? Mrs. Rorkeper. Randy Wolfram. Kalen Wolfram. Grace Saunders. Celine Tudor. And so that's who you were in place of, right?
We had a couple who said they weren't sure.
Okay, so we've got the certificate at the board office that we will bring over to the middle school. Mar, Mrs. Lenhart, right? I learned how to say it.
Yeah, Lenhart.
Lenhart.
There's so many ways.
And then Mrs. Petty. And Mrs. Sligle on the back here.
So if you guys will sit down just for a minute, we have a community presentation. And then we will take a second break so they could leave, Mr. Benteen. Is that okay? So if you just sit down for the community presentation for just a minute. And I think Mr. Bailey's right. It's an example of that there's so much to a well-rounded education that doesn't necessarily involve reading, math, science, and social studies, even though we all know the incredible importance of that. Being a well-rounded individual also is too. And speaking of well-rounded individuals, wanted to bring up tonight for recognition. And just to bring them up because they are two outstanding members of our school community. And that is Ms. Linda Griffin and Brian Russell. So if you two would just come on forward here and stand, Mr. Bailey, for just a second. These two individuals, I had the pleasure of, I thought recruit board here, attending the Claremont County Chamber of Commerce Excellence, Community Excellence Award, and seeing these two individuals receive awards for their hard work. Of course, everyone knows Mr. Russell is our shop carpentry teacher, industrial arts, technology, everything else teacher at the high school. And how many people out there in the audience are up here or came up and volunteered for our bed building project? You know, well, I know some of you did. Three or four of you guys did. That has touched the hearts of so many people in our community, the good things that you taught kids, that you've taught our kids to have a servant's heart and to do something out of the kindness of their heart. So he and his students received the Excellence in Education Countywide Award this school year. And he talked about something more than just math, science, reading, writing. He and his class have exemplified that. So, Mr. Russell, congratulations on receiving that fine award. It's much better than a certificate. You could see from the picture. So we commend you and your shop students. So thank you very much for the work that you've done. And how many beds did we build on the Community Bed Build Day last two Saturdays ago?
Yeah, we built 25 beds in three hours.
Yeah. And it was fun. It was crazy. I was horsed for a day from all the sawdust. So.
I'm still calling up sawdust.
It was, if you haven't seen the photos, there were, I mean, I don't know how many people actually came up that day. Do you?
We had about 50 volunteers.
50 volunteers? A lot of our kids were there, yeah. So too, so. Community members, staff members. So thank you for your work, sir. Congratulations. We also have Ms. Linda Griffin. And Linda, it's probably, how long you been doing the scholarship, Linda?
12 years.
12 years. And my first experience with hearing about the scholarship moved me to tears, sitting in the audience, listening to her tell her brother's story, which is also her story. And it's, she's set up a scholarship that has given literally tens of thousands of dollars to Goshen graduates. Every year, she hands out, how many?
Six scholarships.
Six, six scholarships to graduating Goshen seniors in honor and memory and love of her brother, who died like so many others in Vietnam. And what a tremendous giving heart this lady's had for our kids. And she reminds everyone that she sees, have you applied for my scholarship? Have you applied for the scholarship? And Darrell, don't forget to go to Skyline and support us tonight. And I'm sure she'd take donations on her Facebook page, shorters at scholarship. So, but, and she also has a program that she runs in conjunction with the Lions Club called Happy Feet, where students that are in the need of shoes, she makes sure that those students get shoes. So what, congratulations, Linda, on your award. I declare Claremont County Chamber of Commerce Excellence won the Goshen Township Award. So thank you, Linda. Linda, I know you like to talk, so I did want to give you a second if you wanted to say anything.
Yeah, I got in trouble in the first grade for talking. Imagine that. Anybody that knows who says, oh, what a surprise. Even Tom went, ah. So I just wanted to say thank you to our board. Our school board has been through a really rough time. I brought them each a little gift of appreciation from the Bruce Griffin Scholarship. My money, not scholarship money. So Bruce was 18 when he was killed in Vietnam. His first one from our county and our school. He was only over there three days, first mission. So, you know, about 12 years ago, I thought I had this brainstorm to do something for our seniors and our students. So we've given out over $60,000 in 12 years. And I think the last count was like over 60 students as well. And some of them have become friends. They let me know when they graduate. They keep in touch with me. And then Happy Feet is, I sub at Milford Schools as a school nurse there. So a little girl came in five years ago and flip-flops and it was snowing outside. So I thought, man, you know, that sucks. So I started Happy Feet. And my average is two pair a month. And what happens is anybody in the school, anyone that works in the school sees a kid without shoes, they let me know and I go to Kohl's and buy some good shoes. Usually athletic shoes. I've given out boots, some cleats. And then the kids are very appreciative. The last ones I gave out was a little second grader. And he was wearing Crocs that were way too big. And they were kind of flopping all over the place. So he was eating lunch and they let me go meet him. And I had orange and black athletic shoes. And he said, oh, my gosh, they fit me. They just fit. Okay, I knew your size. You know? But he says, oh, my gosh, can I keep the, can I wear these thing? And then I didn't get a chance to answer. And he said, can I take them home? And I said, they're yours, absolutely. So he gave me a hug, finished his lunch, and showed everybody his shoes. And that's it.
So where else does one school take two people, teach shop, build beds, give a scholarship, and buy shoes? And I happen to be in one organization that she's in that helps support her shoe buying. And at one meeting, she said, you know, I'm going to meet the new manager, I guess, of Kohl's. So she said, I need an N down at Kohl's. Get these shoes cheaper. Hey, what more can you ask for? But two great people that work behind the scenes, you might say. A place to sleep and a good way to walk. We appreciate both of you. Great, great jobs. At this time, if you would like to leave, we're going to start in on a lengthy meeting. But we thank each and every one of you. You're more than welcome to stay. But if you've got things to do that's more important to listen to us, why feel free to go.
Students and parents, you're, don't feel guilty.
Thank you, guys. Good job, guys. See you later.
Good job, guys.
Nice job up there. Good job.
Hey, you were really brave. You didn't play no guitar. Very nice.
Congratulations.
Night, guys. Your royal family.
Guess we can see who's popular. Say if you told them I was going next, they may have stuck around. I don't know. Well, I think she feels guilty, so she's staying. I told her I'd stay.
At this time, we'll ask Mrs. Scherzinger to give us a report on the report card changes.
So the changes, the changes of the report card. And it is a little bit about math, and reading, science, the other stuff that we do in the school district. So I just wanted to come in and kind of give you an update on the new report card changes. They were finalized in, I think, early April. And they are for this school year. So it was after we already started testing that they let us know what our rules are for this year. So you can have the next slide. I'm actually, I'm going to.
Yeah, you want to take that? I'm trying to read your mind.
I know. Great, hey, we're having a wireless keyboard, right? So this school year will have six components, gap closing, achievement, progress, graduation, early literacy. And then a new term for something that we've done before is college career workforce and military readiness. So those are areas that will be on the report card this year. The rating system has changed. Prior to this year, we had an A through F grade scale. Now we're going to a one to five star scale. So that'll look a little different. And that actually happens this year when they release our report card, probably in late September, early October. So as a district and a building, schools in the district will be earning a star based on those components I mentioned before. There's a lot of detail and gap closing. And basically, what this component does is look at how our students are performing, our special area students. So they look at gifted performance. They look at student attendance. They look at our English language learners, our student subgroups, which might be special education students, and those academic areas. So they look at all of those different specialty areas to figure out if those students are learning and growing at the same rate as other students. This is probably the most interesting change because we have to do a little bit of mind shift. Our achievement component has always been, do the students make a 75% or 80% passage rate? That's still going to be reported, but that's not what gives you your achievement score. Now the achievement score is based on performance index. And the performance index is how our students achieved in every area. I think I have an example. So this is an example of what that looks like for us. If you have untested students from all the way to students scoring advanced plus, it's a formula for each of those students. And that's how they're going to figure out whether you make the achievement indicator or not. It's basically on performance index. How our students are performing from limited to advanced plus. Advanced plus are those accelerated students that we have. So if I'm a seventh grade student taking the eighth grade test and I score advanced on that, it bumps me up to advanced plus because I'm taking an above-grade level test. So they're going to compute all of that information and find out what our performance index score is. The next area is progress. And progress used to be called value added. It basically shows what is, how a student has grown academically from year to year. So as a district, we get a goal for a student in math and ELA and the tested areas. And does that student meet that growth goal? Did they stay the same growth? Did they get the score they were expected to get? And so it's going to be over a three-year period for the schools and districts. And I'll look at that data to figure out if we're making progress with those students. We have the graduation rate still. There's a five-year and a four-year, just like in the past. And 60% of the measure is the four-year graduation rate. 40% of that measure is the five-year graduation rate. Early literacy, I think it was called before K through three literacy. It's gone through a different, a few different name revisions. But basically this looks at our students on Ramps, a reading improvement plan at the beginning of the year and are reducing that number the following school year. So that measure is still in place, but there are three components to that measure. The proficiency of our third grade readers when they take that third grade reading test. How many of our students are promoted to fourth grade? And we've luckily, through hard work of our teachers, never had a student retained in third grade based on the third grade literacy indicator. So all of our students have always made that promotion score. And then also, are we improving the number of students from, on ramps from year to year? Are we, are we having less students on a reading improvement plan year to year? And this is the example of that measure. They weight different parts of the measure differently. So it's going to be really interesting. We're going to have to get out our mathematical minds to figure out what that score is going to look like based on all different parts of that early literacy score. And then, actually, we had a DLT tonight. And all of the department chairs and administrators, we divided up and we really dug into each area. And this area was pretty funny because the second line says it all. Not much information is available yet. So the group that got that, I think, pretty much put that on the slide, right, Shaila? There is a few things that we do know. This is what used to be the college prep indicator for our report card. It's changed now to this, college, career, workforce, and military readiness. So we don't know exactly what that measure is going to look like. We do know that there's going to be some reported information this year, next year, and the following year. And then the next year, we should have the actual indicator on our report card. So they're going to phase that one in. And then there's also another category, which is a new student opportunities profile, which looks at all different kinds of things for the students in our district. How many of those students are completing the FAFSA? How many students are participating in extracurricular activities? How many are taking AP courses? How many are taking college credit courses? So it's looking at all different kinds of factors. And that's a report only. They're just going to give us information. They're going to say, your district had 60% of students participating in extracurriculars. Districts like yours had 50%. The state average is this. So it's just going to compare us in those areas too. It doesn't really give us a star in that area, but it's information for us to know and reflect on. So to figure out the district grade, again, we have to get out those calculators and do our mathematical calculations because achievement is going to be about 28.6%. Progress, which was value added, is about 28.6. Graduation and literacy together are each 14% each, and then the gap closing is 14. So we'll have to figure that out to figure out the star, what stars we rate it. And I have some examples here. So this just shows you overall, a five star means the district or the building has significantly exceeded state standards all the way down. If you meet state standards, you're a three to a three and a half star. They will be published in the 22, 23 school year. One of the things that was a big conversation piece is, how do you figure out statewide what numbers to use as a baseline? Because the last time before the pandemic hit, and we didn't see that academic impact, was 2019. So using that 2019 data to figure out where these scores should be and what it should look like is really an interesting conversation. Great news, you can get a half star rating. So it can be a 3.5, 4.5, et cetera. And then, like I said before, they have weights. So their quarterly measure, I talked about that a little bit. This is what we, we kind of dug into our 2019 testing data, just to give you an example of what we would be like as a district. So if we looked at that data, our district performance was, our performance index was four stars. Early literacy was four stars. The graduation rate was five stars and progress was four stars. So that kind of gives you an idea, based on that data, what our scores would look like or what our stars would look like for this year if we had that information out. So just stay tuned. Once we get all of that information, I'm sure I'll be coming back to share with you what that looks like. But we did get some testing data back already for the first time in a very long time. We were able to look at math, science, and social studies scores. I know that's really small. So math, science, and social studies, this is our performance this year. This is the state average. This is us above or below state average. And this is last year. Our score is state average above and below. But that was important to kind of compare last year to this year. And if you notice, we're well above state average in every area. The two that stand out are the two grades where we subject accelerate students and they're not tested. So what we did was, we took this as an example. So if we had all seventh grade math students testing, this is what it would be. But because we pulled them out and accelerate, the scores look like we're a little lower in the areas.
Mrs. Scherzinger, you're talking about that. What percentage of our students, approximate in math, for example, at the middle school, are accelerated, taking the highest, higher grade math?
About 50%.
About half of the kids.
So half of our students have the opportunity, when they leave Goshen Middle School, to have a math, a science, a social studies, a language arts, and a health credit. So almost their entire freshman year completed while they're in middle school. That gives them plenty of opportunities to take AP courses, the dual credit courses, where they're earning college credit. If you look at this section too, this is what our performance index, remember, that's where our score is going to come from. We don't have ELA, so that's going to change. But our, our scores and performance index are going up as well. This one tested last year. If you saw, if you remember from that graph I showed you, that was a 0%, obviously, still. That did not, that kind of impacted us last year when we had some students who didn't take the test. But our performance index is going up from last year. All of our tested areas, for the most part, are going up. You know, this school year, I'm sure you remember, rewind back to September, October, the struggle with student absences. You know, I'm really extremely proud of the work that you see here. And the work of our teachers and our families, their students here and learning. It's a definite reflection. I'm really excited to be able to compare our performance to other districts too because I, I just know that our teachers have worked super hard. Every year we reflect and we try to get better. But this is definitely something to be very proud of. We're still going to offer summer school this year. And because we have these back so early, I have been able to say, why don't we, the student was so close. Why don't we ask them to come to summer school so we can give them that little extra bump to help them prepare for the next school year? Our intervention programs, this tells me they're working. Despite a year where we've had not great attendance, we have improved in almost every area. So it's really interesting, as we dug into that new report card today at our meeting, there's a lot of detail that we still have to work out and we still have to wait for the rules from ODE. So we're going to continue to do that over the summer. And I'm sure I'll come back and give you an update once we have more information. But I think we just want to continue and celebrate the great things that our teachers are doing for our students. And this data is definitely a celebration.
So what have the teachers been doing right now with the data?
They're having, you know, how many school days we have left? And they're digging into the data. They're having department meetings where they're talking about, we did great in this area. This is an area that we need to focus on and reflect. I have different curriculum leads from Hamilton County coming in and meeting with teachers the end of this week and the beginning of next week to really look at the raw data to say, we changed our curriculum apps this year, did it work? Should we be teaching this standard earlier? So they're already digging in and making changes and adjustments to what they're going to be doing next year to make sure that we're focusing on the data and continuing to improve. So do you have any questions?
Yes. How often do they change that report card?
Oh goodness. Okay, so I think I've been doing this job for 10 years and I would say, and four? Four reforms? And this is, okay, so they changed it in February, but then they changed the change of their report card. So that happens a lot too, where they'll say, we think this is what it's going to be. Wait a second, we're going to revise it again. So it is something that we try to keep up with, you know, and become experts in.
Also, you said they weigh it for the five components only, so that number six, the college, career, workforce, and military readiness, they, is that something?
I think eventually, eventually it'd be part of our calculation, just not for a couple more years.
Okay.
They're phasing that one in.
I think it's great that they added that.
Yeah, to look at every student's pathway. What are you doing after high school? I do too.
Yes, we put a lot of weight on that here.
Yeah.
Not just cost.
If I could just remember the name of it. It's so long, I'm like, I need to have an acronym or something.
Teachers.
That's right.
Is some of the work that Mark Edwards is doing going to help in collecting that data that we'll need for that?
Yes.
How will they collect that data?
And you know, Mark does a great job with bringing all these new programs in, the AP programs, our college credit plus programs, and the data tracking. So it's really, it's really important that he continues to, we talked today about that continued look at what are our students taking? You know, I think of an example, I think we added last year, the introduction to education college class. And we all got invited to go and talk with, talk to those students. And what a great opportunity for a kid who wants to be a teacher, to sit with their own teacher, to ask questions about it while they're here. And then when they go to college, that class is already taken care of, so.
And he does a lot with like internships and career, right? Right? So will that stuff be tracked closely?
I'm wondering if they're going to do that in student profile.
So the kids who were part of that program with the education, they're the ones that went to some of the younger schools and sat in with those teachers?
Yes. They did some shadowing of those teachers. Yeah, it's a great program for anyone who wants to be a teacher. Plus, we wanted to get all their names down so we can, you know, look for future.
Well, there's some really good ones.
There's some really great opportunities for us there too. Any other questions? Okay.
Mrs. Scherzinger will be back one more time this summer and probably one more time in the fall.
I know you're very excited about that. Everyone would like to come back. You're welcome to come back.
Answer as special guest.
That's right.
So the next thing we have that board, you know, we've talked about at our, our retreat and several meetings about the need to support our students in many arenas, like beyond just the academic pieces. So Mr. Turner is going to come forward and he is going to be talking about school-based healthcare. Be thinking about, at the end, one of the things that, you know, I know that we're all interested in this, but be thinking about the questions that you would have to make sure that we've covered all of our, our bridges and everything too. Because this is something we're interested in making happen for next school year. So, Mr. Turner?
Thank you. So in starting this, can't take full credit for all of this, picking up the ball and running with it. I did, it started prior to the pandemic and as you heard all of the discussions, timing, the events of the world that have unfolded over the past two years. And now we're back to an opportunity where we can continue to pursue that. So imagine for just a second that you are not feeling well one morning. Probably all of us have gotten that, that experience and we have to make that decision. Are we going to go into work not feeling well? Or are we going to call in sick and try to get a doctor's appointment or something of that nature? So we've had some decisions to make with regard to that. Now, we've all been in that situation, those of us with kids, that opportunity for our kid comes up. What do we do in that particular situation? If you've got family, if you're lucky enough to have family at home and it can help you with that situation, they can help you get to the doctor, watch the child, or whatever the case might be. Personal experience was, family is too far away to make that happen. So we, we had to make the decision and make the juggle of who's going to take the day off from work, who's going to be able to call the primary care physician, who's going to have that opportunity to get them there, if there's even an appointment that day or the next day. And so that morning, typical morning routine is a little bit disrupted, but you figure it out and you go ahead and go through with it. Now let's marry that notion with the idea of our family engagement specialist, who has been a wraparound service for us, who has been, and that's Shelley DeRozio, who has done an amazing job of helping our families to see or that are showing us the experiences that they're having with barriers to their child's education that's not related to school. But if we were able to help connect the community service with that parent, get that child that opportunity to have a successful school day. And with that, I would tell you, now it kind of, oh. Oh, boy.
I'm just going to watch for a minute.
Yeah, Sher, I'm excited to share with you an opportunity that addresses directly areas that with our school, our district goals and student development and communication to support our areas of high-quality instruction, literacy, and college readiness. And that is a school-based health center. Okay, what are those? Those are health clinics that are located in schools that provide preventative and primary care to students, staff, and community. Their services provided that are determined by the community, but most often include health education, treatment of acute illnesses, management of chronic illnesses. School-based health centers require a signed parental consent form before students can be provided services. Continuing, they consist of a waiting or a reception area, lab area, or exam rooms. They're typically staffed by a receptionist or data clerk, a nurse, nurse practitioner, physician's assistant with supervision, or consultation from a physician. Next, they work with, but they don't replace the child's primary care physician if they have one, or a school nurse. They serve as a link to or serve as a child's medical home if they don't have one. What are the benefits to a school-based health center? They provide healthcare to children who may not otherwise seek care. Take my example, there's an opportunity if I can't get, if my child, I get that phone call in the middle of the day and I need to have that, I need to make a decision there. We're going to kind of get to that here, what the opportunities or what the availability might be. They provide children with easier access to care. They promote prevention and early intervention. They help children to stay healthy and they give all children an equal chance to succeed at school. So what are the course services of a health, of a school-based health? Comprehensive physical exams, diagnosis and treatment of minor injuries and illnesses, management of chronic conditions, lab tests, health promotion, behavioral health counseling. Standards include five days a week and summer availability, parental consent, services provided to all students regardless of ability to pay, compliance with all state, local, national regulations, laws, professional standards regarding healthcare services. And so lastly, the proposal that I share with you at this point would be enter into a partnership with Health Source of Ohio, they're local, and in our county, to provide this school-based health center care, or care center. The space that would be available would not be classroom space. It's related services. We have a consolidation plan of those services that allows full access to any of those services that are being located. This space is in the very back of Mark Cook, where the parking lot is, closest to the football field, to allow the entrance for community or staff or our members that would be coming from the outside and at the same time, allow safe, secure access for our students. So there's never the integration or mingling of the students or anyone who may be taking advantage of the opportunity from outside the school. It's provided separate, yet student-accessible. Provide care for our students, staff, and community, health, vision, and dental. And I would be remiss to go back and make sure I made a point very clear through our family engagement specialist. We discovered through our referral system that students needed dental work. And what turned out to initially be just a handful, as we got into it and unpacked it, it ended up being over 100 students that needed some, received some sort of dental services and support through Health Source's mobile dental program. Would like to continue the discussions and partner to renovate and design a space at no cost to the district. Services are at no cost to the district with a ambitious and hopeful opening August 2022, or early fall of 2022. And again, that's, that's what we'd like to continue. That's the school-based healthcare center, or the health center information that I have for you at this time. Would like to return back to you, even if not, well, soon, to kind of share with you the agreement parameters and everything that would be involved there. I'll take your questions at this time.
So besides a physician, there'll be a dentist at this time?
So there's mobile dental services that they would be able to provide for our students as well as vision.
So it's not a full-time dentist on staff? So it's not a full-time dentist on staff, but they run it like their mobile dental service.
Same ended. The preliminary kind of, what may, remember as your own general cleaning, kind of checkup, and if there was any follow-up that was needed.
Is that similar to what we just provided?
Yes, it is what we just provided.
Okay.
So, and then it mentioned that there's, they're gonna be the eye care piece, it's a program that they're starting next year. Which, that would actually be free glasses as well with that, so.
So real quick, so like a student at the high school, if they were referred over there, how are we getting them there?
So transportation would certainly be something that would be ironed out ultimately, however, kind of have to figure, the student's not well, are they able to come over? Or do we need to provide some sort of transportation? We have a preliminary plan where we do have school transfer to the van that would be able to provide that on-call.
Okay, great.
So the parents who will sign permission start of the year, or will they contact them if they have something beyond that?
Great question, working through the processes of what that paperwork, medical has a different set of regulations and rules and such that they do, so marrying those forms and making sure that they would get into the hands of our parents and anyone, it's obviously not mandatory that they complete those, however, it does make a very seamless process in that moment that Tom Turner's got a call and that his kid's not well, I've done the paperwork at the beginning of the year and it's made available quick and easy, and we'll make it to where I can just say, hey, is it a possibility for my daughter to go ahead and go down there and get checked? So those papers would be available.
And I think they'll do a one-time verbal on a parent who did, who did not fill out the forms at the beginning of the, the year.
So they can't go in our final forms?
Right now, it cannot go in final forms, but we're hoping that one day it can go in final forms, so.
Man, I think that, I know that probably be easier for our parents.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Also, like it being separate maybe a little bit to draw attention, like sometimes I think final forms, you go through and check, right? When you have like the athletic stuff and everything else, that would definitely be something I personally would want to consider. And then, just to clarify, so I would sign, say as a parent, I would sign it at the beginning of the year to say, like, I would be interested for my child to have access to this, but then if my child got sick at school, I would receive a call before they would get care.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, nothing's done without your knowledge.
Yeah.
Could this include sports, physicals, which are more like a scheduling versus that?
They would have a sports, physical clinic, I would imagine, prior to starting the season.
And the staff as well can take advantage of this. You don't feel good, you know, you can go down, see them. Health Source has said that they will always take priority over the people who are inside the buildings, over who is outside of the buildings. So if you've got a planned time that you just don't feel good, and you think you've got that sinus infection, you want to get it checked out, you don't have to get up and leave. So hopefully there's, you know, it helps support our staff attendance as well, because you remember Tom's tying all that back to the last three things, an academic achievement, because the more we have you here, the more we have your teacher here, and the more we support good health, the better off we all are.
Catch it early, preventative, any, all of those items that, an earache or earache early on caught, doesn't become an ear infection, that doesn't become more of a systemic hearing kind of problem that may be, so it really is a good opportunity to catch that.
Obviously, it's not us who's running this, but does this possibly open up some jobs for community members and things like that through Health Source?
Oh, well, I'm sure Health Source is gonna have to staff it, yeah. And I'm fairly confident they're looking for a nurse practitioner. So if there's any way, it's a nurse practitioner out there listening, then I'm sure they'll take applications, so. Yeah, and again, all of that is at no cost to our schools. They'll, they're gonna, all that, their staff is paid for by them. All the, we'll have a secure entrance as what Mr. Turner said, all the secure entrances stuff is gonna be paid for by them. They're gonna have to do some renovation of the area, to put up some walls in that area that's paid for by them. And even the cleaning, you know, I do not want to make our cleaning people responsible for a medical facility cleaning. It's, we're more used to school cafeterias and classrooms than halls, so.
Thank you.
You guys know, are there no additional questions? So, you know, I, for Health Source's, I'm gonna bring back the final agreement then, it'd be signed in June, but what I'm hearing is proceed under the parameters we just discussed. You know, the cost will be paid for by them, you guys understand all the safety protocols and the communications with the parents, they've been very successful, they have these in Williamsburg in Western Brown. Mr. Turner, Mr. Bailey and Mr. Smith all visited Williamsburg's, said that the work they did remodeling was beautiful and, you know, I talked to Williamsburg Superintendent who said, you know, student, staff attendance, folks approved. So I wish we'd have had this the last two years. The availability of taking care of the COVID crisis would have been a big plus. Do you guys have any questions of me, anything, I can go ahead and give Health Source a verbal and saying, we just need to approve the final paperwork as long as it's good. They can go to work.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's good.
Okay, right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, Mr. Schlag, or Mr. Schinkel's gonna do whole business summer projects.
Okay, Mr. Schinkel, you're on.
You put me on the floor? All right. It's hard to believe this, you know, this year's coming to an end, we're already talking about summer projects. One of the first things we're doing before all the teachers are leaving is we're emptying all the storage bins out there. That way we can get them, we actually put everything in the gyms and then they all came down and see if they still need it, want it, and that sort of thing, and then we put the rest back out in the storage containers until we see everyone has a chance to go through it, so that's kind of going on there. Really, for the summer, I mean, we've done a pretty good job in regards to all our roofs and that sort of thing, so we don't have what you'd call a major, major, you know, $3 million roof project or anything like that, thankfully. So basically, that's a lot of paint and repairs, painting rooms, we got some repairs on the playgrounds. We are gonna crack fill, try to maintain the parking lot, the high school is like, we're probably gonna end up sealing that, it's pretty bad off out there. So when that happens, just so you know, we also, the hardwood floors are gonna be done in July after all the camps, just, you know, the wear and tear on both the middle school and high school gets that. The padding, it's kind of like the padding like that there that's in the cafeterias, they are literally around 20 years old and they have really shown the wear and tear and like kind of breaking up there, so we're looking at that, as well as the lights in there. I know Senior Citizen Night, they kind of just went down all of a sudden and went back to, we actually had them out here today to look at that. And then all of our signage out here, I mean, if you was new to go, you shouldn't, you drive into, you think our colors are pink and light gray, so we're gonna get all that kind of stuff freshed up and all that, and new flags and all the above. And you can, I know I sent that up on the list, but it's kind of just a rough overview of what we're gonna be doing this on. Anything, if you guys see anything or anything you'd like to get with that or fix or repair able, definitely do that.
Actually, at after prom this past weekend, I noticed, I'm setting up for laser tag upstairs, the lights that are really high up in the dome area, I think there's only one working. So I might need to look.
On the list.
So, which is an interesting thing, and I don't think we've been using that one. So if somebody kicked that one on, she is right. Now, you did, we did install those, I don't know what you call them, the canopy lights on the side.
Yeah.
So did you ever look into that before about the possibility of even making it up to them?
Well, no, that's the big thing, is getting up to them. I mean, you're riding that stairwell, you know, to get a lift up there.
Yeah.
I'll get with Chuck again to, to take a look at that. That is pretty high up there.
Yeah, yeah.
But we'll look at them.
If we're gonna look at that, too, I'd say we look at somebody else getting on a lift upstairs, not our.
Right.
Anybody else got anything? Okay, moving right along, we're up to new business, public participation. Each person addressing the board will give his or her name and address, and you have two minutes to speak. Mr. Bailey will try to be the timekeeper.
First up, we have Mr. Potts. Stand there at your seat here.
Okay, I'll stand right here. My name's Jimmy Potts, I live 3037 Tenner Drive. I'm a board, I'm one of the board members of an organization called American Regulators, we do human interest things, we like human trafficking such as that, we're resilient, we don't stop. The last special meeting we have is about Mr. Gray. And I had spoke to the board members after the meeting and talked to y'all about several different things, about Mr. Brown that was paid off to leave, but you had to according to contract and law. And tonight I want to officially ask you, because they said, the state laws that said you had to do that and union teacher contracts, right? I'm asking for the state laws that you're referring to, and I'm asking for a copy of the teacher-student union contract. I want to read these. I've already set an action organization to go to the state representatives in Columbus, these laws are in place, they should not be there. Teacher's contract has something that allow someone charged as a heinous crime of pedophilia to remain on the school pay board is wrong, that needs to be stopped. So we've already started in action to make this happen, we've been in contact with many state reps, we're gonna fight to get these laws changed, okay? One thing that I did notice at the last time, the board seemed to say, we want this to just go away, Mr. Gray. I disagree with you. I have looked on my emails, I've talked to people, and I know that y'all put out a slight email at one time, I believe that this board should be out there pursuing, putting emails out to make sure that this man has not touched any other student or any other person, and if they have, getting that individual help. They need help because they're a survivor of a crime, a horrible crime. And I think this board and superintendent and everybody ought to be canvassing, working with the police, find out what's going on. I've been in touch with Indianapolis Prosecutor's Office weekly, talking with them, making sure that they're willing to prosecute this man. They told me today that they have been contacted by Ohio, Tennessee, Kentucky, Michigan, Illinois, Indiana people, saying, we want him prosecuted, this thing's going viral. I'm not gonna stop. And if you sweep this under the rug and you just want it to go away, all that you're doing is opening the door for other pedophiles to come to our community. I'm asking you to put forth a very strong stance. My stance is, you come to my community, I've got a child that goes here, you touch my child, I will hunt you down, I will destroy your life. Nowhere will you hide, and that ought to be the stance of the school board and this community. That way we don't ever have to worry about a Mr. Brown or a Mr. Gray in this vicinity ever again.
Mr. Potts, your 10 minutes is up, I'd be happy to say.
Okay.
After I do, I appreciate it.
Yep, thanks, sir.
Next on the list, we have Mark Fouts.
Is it possible to relinquish my time, my two minutes to Mr. Potts?
I don't, I'm in it, just go ahead.
Can I do that per the Roberts Rule of Order? Is that okay?
Do you want two more minutes?
Yeah. What I was getting at about putting forth a strong community effort is, these people come in here and they harm your children. And if you say, just make it go away, many people that I've talked to said, why do they just want this thing to go away? You know what they're telling me? They're looking at every one of you on this board, saying, what are you hiding? Do you know, do they know of other people that's involved in pedophilia or anything close to it? And I said, I don't think so, because I've talked to you, but I think for y'all's satisfaction and to be an upstanding board member and superintendent of schools to stand up and say, hey, we're not gonna put up with this, there's nobody else in this school that we know of, and if they are, we want them out of here. And I want your support to go to the state Capitol and everybody's support, I don't care where you're at, where you sit at, you need to be involved in this stuff, these are your children. Many children that are sexually assaulted commit suicide. Have you ever seen pictures of this? I fight human trafficking. I've seen pictures, I've seen the evidence of it, it's not pretty. They sell them for organ harvest, sex slave. A pediatric heart on the black market's like $50,000 minimum, they take a child and take his heart to sell it. This needs to stop. We need to get involved in this stuff, school boards need to stand up, it's happening way too much across this whole country, where we're finding teachers and board members that's pedophiles. I'm gonna fight it, I'm gonna stop it. And I appreciate everybody's help here on this board and spread it through this community, we're not taking this anymore. Touch one of our children, see what I do to you. You mess with a Goshen child, you're done. We're gonna make sure your job fires you, and by the way, to protect a teacher's job or a government official's job violates the Constitution of the United States. On my job, where I work in aerospace engineering, I got a classified secret clearance. If I was arrested for that or even questioned, put out there, I lose my job, I lose my clearance immediately. Constitution said there's no law to be made for the government that does not apply equally to the people, and no law for the people that does not equally apply to the government, and that's across the board. And that's what we're gonna fight and stop. So when they start doing this stuff with these laws, you people should be standing up saying, that violates Constitution, we're not protecting them, they're not gonna abide by this law, and get lawyers, we'll fight them. These kids are precious. I was so excited when I come here to bring my grandson here, and I hate that this happened.
Thank you. I'm Rick Klosterman.
I'd like to continue my time to give me if you'd like.
Okay. I've been to other school districts, my grandson's biracial, he's been called the dirty brown boy, okay? Here in this school, I've had some issues with it, I've called Ms. Walker, just like that, she was off the phone and took care of it. She doesn't want anything to happen to these children. And God, I pray that you on this board and people running around here don't want this to happen to children. But we need to take a stand, we need to take our government back. There's, it's not just this, there's all kinds of stuff, you know, student testing. Why do you gotta teach for a test? Why don't let the teachers teach? If you got a bad teacher, get rid of them. That's all, I don't care, fire them. Active shooters in school, I would have never thought in my life that we would have to have police officers patrolling our school. But why ain't families, I look around here, how many students do we have in this school? Total, from kindergarten to 12th grade?
3,000.
3,000. Why don't we have 3,000 parents sitting here at this school right now? I don't understand that. I'm guilty of it, but guess what? You're gonna get to know my face. I'm involved in this school from now on, I've already talked to Mr. Bailey about a lot of stuff, we want to be involved, the organization wants to help with the active shooter thing, we do this stuff, we train for stuff like this, we look at things, I'm crazy on it, we want to protect our children. Our children's the most important thing for the future of our country, we need them raised properly, we need them to feel safe, and we need to know that if they go to a teacher and say something, they're gonna get help, that they're gonna contact parents. And I'll fight any school board member, I'll fight any superintendent, assistant teacher, anybody that puts children at risk. And let me tell you, this medical thing, just to throw this out, because it's right here, two questions I have. Number one, are they gonna submit all of the results of any testing to the parents? Because many times, medical professionals don't like to do that, parents should know everything about their child that's going on. Question number two, they're gonna be over there and it's open to the public, how are you gonna make sure that those children are safe? And he said he's got a safe way of doing it, I don't know, but are you gonna screen who's coming and going? Somebody pulls up there, how do you know what they are? You know how long it takes to snatch a child?
All right, Mr. Potts, that's additional two minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Think about these things.
That's all we had on the public.
Thank you, Mr. Potts. Thank you. Mr. Bailey and I want to get ahold of you and answer some of your questions, I can rest assure that safety is our number one priority here, and I think you know a little bit after talking to Mr. Bailey, so I appreciate your thoughts. Specifically on the board, on the, I mentioned, that there are double the entries for the school-based healthcare center. You have to be able to strike in two areas to be able to get into that area, so those people won't be mixing with our kids. There's gonna be a separate entrance for the healthcare and for the healthcare, people that would come in the building, they have to be able to use a key card to be able to get into the building. And likewise, for our staff to go out there, they've got to do the same thing as well. That's covered by Health Source, just in case that is a question of yours tonight, so.
That brings us up to new business, section B. Do I have a motion to approve 1 through 9?
It's a move.
There's a second?
Second.
Schinkel, you call the roll. Shinkle, you call the roll.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Rera?
Yes.
This, I'm going to read, has to do with the resolution for the, uh, bond issue.
The Goshen Local School District is in need of additional classroom space due to the growth in the Goshen community. In order to continue to provide their current programs and services that are being offered by the district, the following resolutions are necessary for the district to get a bond issue on the ballot for this fall. This bond would be used to build a new elementary building, add classroom space, and improve the traffic flow on the campus. The first resolution is to get the maximum maturity of the bonds allowable by the Claremont County Auditor. The next three resolutions are to declare necessity of issuing bonds, but all have different interest rates as the current market is very volatile. Therefore, we are passing all three, so the county auditor can select the one she is most comfortable with and establish the millage rate for the issue. So, we're voting on items ten through thirteen. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
Mr. Shinkle, you'll call the roll.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Rera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Section C, personnel matter, motion will be one through thirteen. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
Mr. Shinkle, you'll call the roll.
Mrs. Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Rera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
This will be a motion approved, item number fourteen. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
Mr. Shinkle, you call the roll.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Rera?
Same.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Section D, miscellaneous, one through three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
Mr. Shinkle, call the roll.
Mr. Rera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Pat Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
We're up to Board of Education reports. Uh, Mrs. Casey, do you have anything?
Just a couple things. Um, I think I said last month, but Great Oaks, our treasure is officially retiring as of December thirty-first. I know we're very bummed. Um, so, that board will begin a nationwide search in June. If you know of any good treasures, send them our way. Um, Great Oaks also has their education foundation golf outing in June on the thirteenth at Blue Ash Golf Course. And as far as legislative, um, late last week, the Ohio State Board of Education, Education chose Steve Dakin as the new superintendent. So, he most recently served as Columbus State Community College Superintendent, and prior to that, he was at Reynolds Brook Schools. So, I know that he had narrowed it down, they dwindled it down for a while. Uh, we were watching that, so they finally chose, voted on it. So, he won fourteen to four. That's all I have.
Mrs. Gray?
Student achievement, I, um, wanted to point out the OSBA, um, student achievement group nominations are due May eighteenth. So, if they haven't already done that, I know we usually like to have the student achievement group up there, and then, um, lots to celebrate, right? Last week, we had the academic top twenty signing day, which was exciting. Coming up, we have the senior where to celebration, um, tomorrow night, tomorrow during the day, tomorrow night, scholarship, um, night to celebrate our seniors and many scholarships that are awarded, like Lyndis. And, um, kindergarten graduation coming up next week, of course, our graduation, but a special celebration tonight for the Great Oaks, um, Live Oaks graduates. Um, and unfortunately, we couldn't be there because of this meeting, but we definitely wanna.
So bummed.
Celebrate all of our graduates from the Great Oaks.
Mr. Rera?
I was gonna speak of the, uh, two that are recognized tonight. Already heard from them with the, uh, significant piece that Bill and Linda Griffin, the great things they're doing. They were recognized Claremont Chamber of Commerce Award, as well as, uh, Goshen Chamber. Uh, and also, they're in a Goshen Chamber of Community Awards. We had, uh, Stephanie Naylor, one of our teachers, that's awarded the Excellence in Education Teacher of the Year Award. Uh, it was a great night's celebration, uh, and, uh, our senior citizen dinner was a success. The kids put on a musical up here, the first time it was done, musical moment, it's just dinner, and, uh, everybody really, really enjoyed it, and we, yeah, some, uh, thank your notes from some of the community members. And, you know, they, 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 they got some, we should continue dinner theater next year.
I don't have anything from the township, uh, so that brings us up to the superintendent's report.
So, real quickly, Mr. Benton, uh, as far as committee work, Mrs. Pat Rocky will be receiving all the communications from now on.
The auto, audit, audit and finance committee and the facilities committee. Uh, I will, uh, share them duties with you.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Bailey, can I have a key word, sir?
You can.
So, I threw a couple pictures in, okay, so, just, uh, uh, a couple, uh, pieces. My return to learn is shortened to two bullets now. Uh, we have had a few cases of COVID here in the past couple of days. Uh, and, so that's why you have the, uh, I do not have COVID. I'm one of the close contacts, so, uh, but, uh, and then, Mr. Shinkle addressed the emptying the storage bins of furniture, placing them back in the classroom, so. Uh, so, under high quality instructions in your report, under our first target area, um, the first two bullets have already been spoken about. Uh, the third bullet, Goshen High School was recognized, uh, this past month, um, as being ranked as the hundred and sixth out of eight hundred and seventy-four, uh, high schools in the state of Ohio, as a best high school award winner. So, we'll be, uh, putting something out of that. Uh, we're excited about the work that our folks at the high school do with kids, and one, A, I think we talked about the top twenty, Mrs. Gray did. Um, you can see a picture of the kiddos there, uh, the excitement on their face, the joy and the places of where they're going. I'm really looking forward to the Montana Grizzly Report, so, uh, so, but they're going all over, and, uh, we're excited.
One's going to Hawaii, too?
Yeah, one's going to Hawaii, Pacific. So, uh, their, uh, their destinations are leading them lots of places from here, so. Uh, also, the Grassy Run Festival was a big success out here in our collaboration with the township. Our fourth grade students got to tour it. Um, I think they're, uh, interested in coming back again next year, and will be stopping by, they wanted me to express their appreciation to you guys. Under early literacy, Project More update, uh, this year, they had forty-two kids mentored by, uh, members of, three adult members of the community, uh, six Live Oak students, six GHS students. Uh, I believe, uh, those came out of, for the most part, came out of that education class to give them some, uh, hands-on experience. Uh, and, uh, twenty-four GMS students, they rotated by quarter, there were six of those each time, so we had forty-two students served by that volunteer program. Under college and career readiness, kids are out there taking their AP test right now, trying to get their college credit, uh, and once it starts, they'll get to, uh, rolling with that. Uh, the final BAC meeting was held, the minutes are in your packet from the BAC meeting. Uh, we had a presentation from the GRIP project, uh, talked about their partnership that they have, and each one of our kids being able to do some career exploration, and, uh, while one mentoring with folks to, uh, talk about the career direction, uh, and, uh, really discuss next year's focus areas. Uh, everybody got to have input. That really has been an outstanding group. One of the bullets on there is, uh, market, which got to go up and accept award, um, at the, uh, state conference, the AIM Higher Conference, uh, and, uh, it's really been a great, great committee to provide feedback. Also, under the, uh, college and career readiness, uh, we got six students who are gonna be attending a three-week program this summer at Shawnee State. Five are getting IT credentials, and one's getting healthcare credentials at Shawnee State for three weeks. Uh, so, just so many opportunities. If you look through that, TCS had a, had a student took part in a smart garden project there. And then, uh, we got a student who participated in the summer TAP Health Internship. Uh, students anatomy and physiology class participate in the Health Collaborative Success Bound Virtual Career Event, and students in Russell's class participated in Crystal Construction Day. So, uh, lots of career ed stuff going on. Uh, the where to surveys also gonna be wrapped up the past few weeks, uh, that's basically track of, uh, helping kids make career choices. Uh, the technology education, we've put a, uh, parent information site on technology use on our website. We've seen so many questions about, you know, uh, technology use and what can they do, what can they not do on the computers at school or at home, and so there is a parent informational website there, uh, that's, uh, well put together to be able to answer anybody's questions. Communication, uh, the, this month has been a big month for recognition, recognizing our nurses. Bill mentioned, uh, the Goshen Chamber of Commerce, which probably never gave us pleasure to nominate somebody for award of the Karen gear, uh, uh, this year, because that lady has, uh, worked very long hours all school year. Uh, she's our school nurse for the public, after she did, she's done a, just done incredible, yeah, the work the last two years.
Yeah.
She's, uh, she's an angel, and her patience and kindness are, are there. And, uh, of course, our staff, teachers, bus drivers, everybody, so. Under student development, we've had, uh, our Special Olympics, our athletes have been very busy in competitions, uh, gives us joy to watch that. Uh, and, uh, our spring programs are held, our music programs, and other great things that went on this month was the father-daughter dance, over nine hundred people attending. Uh, the mother-son event at the bowling alley, uh, our PTO is just absolutely amazing in how they support our kids and families. Spaulding had a family picnic, uh, so we've got a return of our family events, trying to expand those as much as we can. Uh, and on the, uh, sports, uh, front, a little bit, uh, sports and academics, we had several kids, you can see them mentioned there. Tanner Newberry signed with UC Claremont, continues academic soccer career. Logan Levens, who went to college, is academic football career. Emma Riddle, uh, to her academic softball career, so. Here's one I didn't have in my report, but senior, uh, Gina Welch's first-place Congressional District Art Contest, two airplane tickets, uh, her, her art will be hanging in the House of Representatives, the Capitol Building. Uh, absolutely amazing. What's best about it, I showed it to several people, and I said, what is this piece of artwork entitled? And almost everybody got it right. So, I'm not gonna make a test, okay? Just gotta look where, what the hands are doing there, so, it's the, uh, gosh, I won't get it right. The.
The people here, the people speaking.
There you go. Mr. Rera gets an A.
He cheated, I know.
Yeah, he probably did.
I'm a critic.
There are just a bunch of other pictures I mentioned to you, the, the build, the happily sleeping, happily peace build. Uh, pictures on the left are a person from the board office working with her son, I can't tell who's back is to us. Uh, in the middle, you've got, at the top, you've got Mr. Tudor from the high school, Mr. Bailey, Jack Bailey, track coach. I can't see who's in back in that picture.
Ms. Walker.
Ms. Miller, Ms. Walker.
Ms. Lowry.
Mr. Lowry, student in the front, there in the middle, the guy in the red shirt, sweatshirt, the guy in the middle, that's me, who was fatally drowning in sawdust at that time, with Mr. Rera, with his back of his shirt filling up with sawdust from the guts there. So, and then, on the right, I think those are all kids, but what a night, what a great day that was. And then, just on the athletic front, our four-by-two-hundred-meter relay won the league track meet and a new record, and Peyton Lucas took thirteenth in the state sixteen-hundred-meter run, which is really impressive, considering she'd have won the high school league meet with her time, so. And there's the picture that you guys talked about, so. So, it's been a busy month on, uh, those pieces. I just have some, uh, oh, yeah, and I forgot that one, heck, that happened after I put my report out, Mrs. Fisher, uh, on Channel Twelve, local teacher of the week, she was visiting us last month, but here, I think last month, so. On other things, uh, I already went over two, just reminders to you guys mostly. High school graduation, uh, date and time, annual staff recognition breakfast, of course, if you can't make that, I know that you guys work, uh, but you're welcome to be a part of that. The Memorial Day Parade, um, just want a confirmation that this is something that you guys want to continue doing and are interested in doing. Mr. Rera shaking his head, yes. You're welcome to bring your spouse, or kids, or whoever, ride the bus, um, you know, and, uh, attend, we'll have, uh, we always, we always put a bus in the parade, because the bus has to bring band kids back anyways. Just remember, you gotta find a ride back, or sit with a bunch of kids on the band bus, so.
Which is fine.
Yes.
It's fine, my kids.
Well, they're really hot. At the end of that.
You leave your room up at the front.
Yeah, they do, they do, so, uh, uh, so that's, the lineups at nine, the parade's until ten, so you do not need to be there at nine o'clock if you're going on that. Yeah. Quarter to ten, you know, so, unless you want a cup of coffee. Um, and then, uh, I have a reminder of the, the board meeting dates there. Um, also, scholarship night being tomorrow night, I think you mentioned that, one of you guys got the ended, and if you're interested, and then, uh, Wednesday night, we do have the facilities meeting, uh, with the community at seven o'clock, so.
The one at the end of June is the short one, in the morning?
Yes.
Yeah.
That, June twenty-fourth at seven AM is just to prove the end-of-year, uh, closeout of the finances, so, and it will be literally, very shortly now, so.
Okay.
And that one, um, we'll see where the location will be.
We typically have it in the office, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're good with that, as long as we don't have a bunch of boxes over there, we're good. Seven. Okay. Anything else, Mrs. Gray?
Yes, I forgot one thing. The Goshen Education Foundation Alumni Association, I'd like, this is hosting, um, golfing for